They've been playing catch up. Right. Clear it is. You know who told? You know who told? Do you ever hear of? That's technically a street. So.
It is.
But doesn't.
It's got candy water.
We go through all the hours. To get ready for. To go, to get ready for wisdom. Do they file that paperwork?
No.
Oh.
The origin, no shortage, and then we actually have the mountain.
The mountain. Sorry. I mean, this, this won't. Very. Um. But I'm. You know, thank you. A lot.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good. My.
See. If you. Speak. If you could remind me your name. Put a board up there.
You'll let you. Well, uh, thanks for your, I feel like you're looking at so. Quite them. Yeah. Okay. Go back and read it. Yeah. Exactly.
Can you hear everybody else?
Listen. I'll check. Let's be here. Good. That's. That's the.
It's almost, it's almost.
You're mentioning.
It's. You know. We hope that it gives you. Ready, all right. And that's all right. Thank you.
Um, is everybody ready?
Yeah.
Uh, the time is six oh two. I call the city health media volume second. When it's one thirty to one. We'll always.
Come on. Sure. Come on.
There.
Have a good day. Yep. Right here. There. Great here. There.
You're. Uh, thank you. At this time, uh, we have approval of medical. We do have a change. Oh, approval. Approval in there. Uh, we do have a change. Uh, we have to pull order seven. All. Uh, it was supposed to have included, uh, energy code. And it does not. And we'll be able to speak to that, but what we can't complete because the heaven knows. But.
Right. Recent state law requires that if municipality updates any of their codes, that we need to adopt an energy code at the same time. One of the three most recent energy codes, which inadvertently was not included in. State. In case to get this adopted. Real accidentally did not put in post. It's that we can do, uh, energy code for free. It's a problem. And then in the second, uh, of all your codes together. So. Sorry about that, but it does make the meeting slightly shorter. Just like.
Okay. Uh, any other changes to the agenda? Uh, everything to approve agenda. So.
I need.
Please say. Any opposed? Any of this? Thank you all in favor. Uh, at this time, we have housekeeping matters. Uh, anything you'd ever want to talk about before we start? I have two. Number one is I feel like I've talked to a lot of people about this and I, I, I've driven there a number of times. I feel like maybe, uh, the striving, the, the, uh, uh, diet part that we did at the coast office, uh, is a lot of people feel it's really, especially in terms of how the narrative street. Uh, I think this meeting is still viable, but that's in the summer. In the winter, it could be a different story. And so I just wondered what sometimes to develop my talks, cities, other people have. Uh, all, you know, those perspectives that, uh, well, I may not totally agree, I agree just enough. Uh, and I'm trying to strike people back out because what we can start all want to do. Uh, and I probably have.
I would add from two, especially one two where it's.
Like. Okay. Sorry. The second thing I'd say is, you know, we had decided as council not to put a part of the program. Play it out. But I would say some streets in the level are really, really. And I'd say myself. Hope. Could follow so. Uh, in terms. And, and now, and people, there was not that. So all this is not, so be an accident item. If adopt the, at least using those two as a starting. We're. Need man's law. So you're. Everyone. Under you ones. We need. Get spots. Like so. Well, we have a lot of. If you're smiling with the door. I was, uh, hoping there are a few left, but not. I haven't seen yet, but I've got over twenty. Uh, parts inside of the directional arrows. So we went through size of, uh, ten to, uh, around the city. Showing people how to get to visitor, where we, where the visitors park. Uh, so, you know. I agree with you. Anyhow. Just allow you to do that. We have one new person. Also, I was, uh, the, if you jump, is out. It is. Is it today? When it goes out, I know that, you know, we, we sent bias in today. Uh, but when it goes out. They have a lot of those things all the time. Mine deeply don't understand what, uh, taking that there is.
And we opened a ticket on it. Flatness contacted them through there. Uh. Well, that was like, right. And so we, we have. We have. To get open, to get repaired.
The, the, the thing seems to be. Pretty.
Thank you.
Of course, I'm a gender diverse public would like to speak with. Either on Zoom or get in. Uh, please come up, introduce yourself, ensure you're up. You have three words.
Many of us. Thank you. Want to be good. Unfortunately, they just say that the fairer drivers in this community to be them. Their own, it's a finding version. Um, they're done with them. They're going to be, um, being too. That over the trying to be a spirited airplane in order to be in the she's alive of something. Ball. And saying, I'm doing. It's more complex than I could have handled. Oh. Never was that. Um. And then I have to just want to, guys, that when you met with the top, maybe it was. College. War seat. Transformation on paper. Then I remember you guys saying they. It's. It's me with industry and people with the. So just kind of. And I'm all happy information. All studying. All the ones that shop for people who are looking for. Or combined, we first. Uh, local.
Better. Hey, my name is the public. Okay. So now, at this time, I would ask for approval of the merits. This is the list from July nineteen point three.
I may just do this.
Move. Service. You know, discuss. Okay. Please say. Any opposed? Any suggestions? Thank you all in favor. Okay. Our first presentation is local, let's have a look at all corporation and agency.
She. She's. Both of you. Just a little. Um, to give the agent, to be a. Um, the gentleman's name. We. They. Today. And if you're, you're. Here. And. It's. Here. Further. And. Yeah. Of. But. Yes. Me, um, and you are. What's. The after really injected. Tea that. But it can be. Two in the. On a four. On. Um, everyone. No, you're. Personal getting on that. We have made one. It's a big change. It's. Yeah. Yeah. Very nice engagement. Um, if you want, hey, I'm. Hey, I can. Let me. Maybe. To. Do. And. Um. In detail. Within. If the interest. It didn't give. But if it get me to see. And. Extreme. So. Did you? You're. Study. Yes.
What do you want? Do you need to say? Just based. So. So.
Well, it's just. If you. I'm. Giving. And we were giving afraid of that. We've been sort of. The resources. The. But. It's. Use the. Thank you. Really. Yeah.
Oh. I'm. Sound. Very. Storm. We have. Something.
Sir. How.
So. Something. That. There's.
Yeah.
Day. Where's the. Never in the. The third. And we did. Jobs.
I don't think more we did that. Okay, Dave.
Yeah. Some. Here's this day. But. We. Over two hundred. That's. Excellent. That's. Yeah. You're. Thank. You're important. You count the straight path more without adjusting for. Your time, gas. If you adjusted for this, so it puts you to be making. The same. We're at least like, so there's kind of being. I mean, church. So. And the most moving answer. We got.
Yes. This. This. We often just. People. Giving. Yeah. This is not. It's. Just. Questions. So. Uh. It just. So. First. So maybe you're actually, we need to. Scale and. So. We. It needs me. Film. And. So. We have. Well, yeah. And.
You can just say. You can start. All the books. It's pretty very. So. If you can, just next quarter, if you can allow you.
And. Do you want to meet?
Good.
Meet me if you'd like. I'll slip. Um, I hope it is all, all of our stuff. Um. Here. Stay. Uh. The first. Again. I think it's amazing. The. Yes. Pretty good day. In cooperation. I would like to. Be off the best. And.
I mean.
And be. This. Here. And, um, from this, and because this just we have been getting the. Um. The experience. For the favor of friends. But. You're focused. Yeah. I. I. Best thing. Relate to. To. It's. Point. It will be. Yeah. Um, there's me. I'm now. They. 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 React. They. Three. I'm. Two. Two. Okay. I continue to be a bit.
But.
Apparently. Yes. We continue to. Continue to be. Every. Destination. So. It.
Very.
Me. And. You. Um. We did. We've been ready to. To. These. We did. The. Didn't. Do something. With. It's the thing. And then you're working. Then. All of them. I. And. It. So we. And. If we have. And it's to be. Um. One. It was. A structure. Yeah. Two. To. Yes. Okay. Yeah. It didn't. It's. Being obtained. And. It's all here. We have to stay. A little bit. But it's. You have. We have. Yeah. It. What? Not sure.
She has. Uh, host back out and she's been a part of it. She's on it. And, uh, the excavation is in place for the last couple of days, a little bit quickly. They not only have figured out a clean sewer line. And. Uh, this, this, uh, this new. It's. Excellent. Hmm.
Yeah. Asia. Into. To. One. Yeah. I do. Yeah. These. Um. Do. They. They don't need that. Other. Time. Yeah.
As a. You. Today. It's on the.
Right on.
Excited to have us for her. Her. Programs doing well and that, you know, self dimensional. See that we want to. Bring resources. Is our. Interesting. Through. On. If. Thank you. You.
Thank you very. Next. City Administrator.
Great. One of the things that we were just talking about is. No finding the folks where. Within the city and one of the things. Cities do, they. Lots like on the vaccine and maybe in the. So I think. That's once we. Can. Well. I think once we get the wayfinding, that's also something we can do to help people find those lots because I agree some of them are. Not. Being. But. Right now. So we'll ask you. For. And. Um. Terminal. We're going to goal setting. Twenty twenty three and. We all. Starting. Um. Meeting. We. And. Um. It. Will include a DOLA representative. Meeting and literally in the very next day. Uh, Chris, we knew that she um. Is leaving and actually as now has left DOLA. Um. Uh, this. Okay. So. She has left. Dana. Who's Regional Manager. Grand Junction. Will uh be our. Entry. Uh, DOLA representative and Dana is. Starting to do the goal setting. Plus facility. And we need to. Her will be advanced to kind of get a. Organized. Or. Or. But then. They don't make the first of them. If you have. Or. So. Get some ideas and what they're thinking. Um, so. The. Uh, three. Interviews. I've made one interview. And we'll. See. This week. Just good news. On the. Position. Weeks and. Some. Position. Appreciate. Schneider stepping in. So. What's after. Uh, let's see. The. Other. I feel. If. Some. Seems. The. Questions. Samuel Ford's being placed in Harrison Avenue. And. I think initial inquiry was. Uh, that. Some of the. We place on Harrison Avenue. Impeded ADA access. And. So does. Bring it. Um. Anything from inhibiting ADA access. And that sort of got us in a general conversation about Samuel Ford's on Harrison Avenue. And not surprisingly, sometimes our code. Uh, is needs signature presentation and so what it came down to is I just asked for. City Attorney Christian Adam Cormick to give us. A legal. As to basically what. Uh, Samuel Ford's. And the answer. Um, is completely the answer that some people want at this point. Uh, but. Sign code prohibits Samuel Ford proceedings. Prohibits them. Nothing through. Street. So. All the same. Fourth times that you see I have a sign. Are actually. Committed. The city does allow Samuel Ford's sign under certain circumstances. That. Harrison Avenue, but those required permit. As of right now, the city has zero. I had our, I think the city clerk checked. As of right now, we have zero. Do we have there? We we may have. No, we don't have any. Um. As far as we know, we don't have any permanent sometimes. So we what we need to do is a little housekeeping here with Samuel Ford's. Um, I think. One of the issues is, is that, you know, they may pop up and they may go unnoticed, but what happened is we had some people notice and we had some people really pushing for a a a, you know, a definitive answer on this. And so the definitive answer under our current code, according to our state attorney, is they are not allowed on Harrison Avenue. Now, if we decide we want on Harrison Avenue, that's certainly something we can change in our code. One thing. This is. Has. Seven. Places. Potentially financial. Contributes some type of way. You know, we have. That. Help. And that would be something. Be something we consider Blue Samuel Ford's. But that's why we. Uh. If they are allowed, we do have restrictions in offers and avenue about size, location, how they're secured. Uh, those types of things. And they need to be permitted. I think that the business owners who. Concerned. It begins in the. So I just. Give you the information that I. Chris Young. I think it's, this is the starting conversation of this. Uh. This is the end of the conversation. If they could maybe. Good chance for us to at least look at this. And it remains in Blue Samuel Ford's. Do something. Tasteful. Serves the same purpose. So. Thanks.
Sida. Told me about six years ago that they. But they were, they were tired and we weren't tired until we had wayfinding. Then like just a few weeks ago. Alan told Lori, well, yes, you can. Allow them. In your city code and and regulate them through the city, which he he never said before, but.
Great. So in in part of this. Starting conversation, we asked clarity with very immediate clarity from color. Transcription about Harrison, which is. They consider their jurisdiction. Um, the roadway from code to code. They consider our jurisdiction to regulate. Curved building. So they will allow us, and I asked Alan to provide, we can state statute that said it and I double checked it. They will allow us to regulate. From curved two building. So we, if we didn't have sign code, we could have sign code, but we do have one. And so we've, we've. We've gone through the analysis that I think was needed for a while is to figure out. Who controls this area and what are the rules? And right now, we have jurisdiction over that area. We have rules in place. The rules in place right now are saying no sign, Samuel Ford's reportable, whatever you want to call them. They're not allowed. From ninth to. And a local section down to nine, but I'm not sure why that is. I hope you, the interpretation we got from our city attorney, which includes Mount, and you think should, you should think about what's next in the conversation and how we want to. And we can. You know, maybe in the next. Um, city administrator report and then once you become a dead desk, it push on with information, we can talk about what we want to work session or how we want. Uh. That ties into something else we've talked about and maybe something we want to talk about in our goal setting is. Uh, I think communications with the public, we don't have a great way to push out information right now to the public. Uh, we have. We post things on the front door. We have a website. Uh, but this and the other thing that actually made me think about this was fourth of July. Uh. In the city, we can figure out. Restrictions within city limits and they push that information out on fire and police department and I never stood. Meeting. The two hundred and ninety. This is amazing information. People have been asking, wonder what can you do within city limits? And it made me realize that. We don't necessarily have a nice approach to community with citizens. And so that is something. Which I have information like this. Maybe we talk. You know, communications. In the city and it's. Um, I do think it's something. That is. Targeted. Or. Sometimes job duties or. But I do think. You know, the band that was. Britney. Doing electronic. News. Those can subscribe to. Push out information. Would be very. Um. So good news. Uh, I think we. It sounds that we can use our conservation trust fund. So that's a. Like. We get. Uh, we can use that for security cameras in city parks. And so we know that there's that issue with abandonment and. There's specific issues. With. You know, click the books that they enjoy that and create a dis- a discenter. So we can use our conservation trust fund money or security cameras in parks and so on. At least you know that you need to see the stuff and the condition of pursuit of it. So. Um, that is good news. I mean, I think that we have. Bandages. Um, certainly. Security cameras. And then the last. In the next meeting, we will. Um. First to get. And we'll see. Our. Next. Meeting. Lesson.
Can you.
Um, how uh do you. Yes. We. Christian and I have been prioritized in her workload, which uh is a lot. Has been. With. Issues. So. It is. Very. So. Thank you for. We can put. As an action of the last city administrator reports, we can put one family person in that house now. And actually, I've got a phone call or email thing. Um. Tracy. Who is. Manager for Ego Transit. So they do the rental shopping. And. Try to convince this. They are having a total funding. Right now. For the winner. And one of the. Stress. And she had emailed me to say, hey, where can we? List this position because we're not going to have interest in it. We have uh. You know, sort of a foothold in rental market. We don't have that anymore. So it's hard for us to get it right. And I said, we need to talk. So she and I talked, they're going to come up and look at the house, she and her, some of her management team, because they actually quite often do. Uh, master lease to get housing for their borrowers so that that's an incentive for them to be able to hire in rental. They do not want to cut the second bus. That they want to go the other direction. So we had a great conversation and they would love to, um, they're going to come up and look at the house, but it's very similar to the other types of housing that they do. And what they would do is they would just master lease that from the city. They would be essentially dependent and then they manage the. You know, who. Being the. Person they hired was good. And they had a really good look at that in the communities. So. They actually were, if if they also was processing managers. They would would like to just be guaranteed one. And. So they could. Get that. They're posting. Incentives with that position rather than. Just, I think the concern was. They. That they would just. So. Which is.
Not to reach out to schools.
Oh, thank you.
And and all our students called me back. They want a person who they think is housing secure. Um, there's to get people. Um, in position for the school. Said. We can leave. Some of this. Either. Same. Says, well, then what if everybody was paid one. That.
Well, I just.
Just.
Say. I'm. With uh a long term tenant who is across the. State. Smithy. He's very nice. Uh. He has said that they. Seen this himself. There's not necessarily right now. We. Want. Uh, but he is uh very welcoming to us having that house, wants to be a good apartment neighbor with us and so we're very excited.
Thank you.
Well, that was it. So, yes, we would need to get ourselves a short term rental license and.
It doesn't.
Correct. It doesn't transfer. So we need. Very.
We.
Yeah. So it's possible. It it, I mean, it's possibility, but I think that.
Okay. You.
Um, it seems that there's some sound quality issues. The people in the Zoom meeting are saying that it's cutting out.
I guess. We could hear anything to answer that. So the clear question.
Is it any better if we have someone. Maybe we just ask. Maybe if someone. Like.
On. Recently. That's a. In position.
Got it.
Is there a problem with this microphone? Is there a.
Turn on. You see, I've seen these lights.
Maybe if someone needs to speak. If he needs this.
Well. Well. Christian said it's all the. And Jason also does things like. Mics.
The first question is. And and it continues to be a problem. My.
Well, well, it sounds like it's something we need to work on.
So. Yes.
I mean, if anybody's in there commenting, there is a microphone that seems to be working any better than the others, put it in the chat box and we'll. Just pass the.
Things. Maybe that they put out. What. We want to hear. They. If I could. Oh. So.
Can you guys hear a sound in Zoom?
So. Can you hear us or can you not?
Hi. Hey, it's Sarah. Hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Pretty good. Your your volume is okay. It's just you be a connection thing where. Lori comes in fine and but then she'll cut out for, you know, four or five words. So. I I'm not sure what to tell you. I'm sorry. I couldn't. I couldn't. I was paying attention to the test there, but. I I'm not sure which microphone is working better.
Thank you. I'll proceed. Okay. Thanks. Um. Um, next up, we're just about right. This is an order to prove a third amendment to the phase one. This is second reading, so we want to help carry process. Um, so I'm kidding. We're just in a very serious, it's approved a third amendment. Phase one, plan. Council is considering second. City council. Because second and final reading, city council will follow these steps. First of all, it's the city staff, the city presentation, or provide any information that they have to city council about the ordinance. City council will have the chance to ask questions of staff and have discussions with staff during the staff presentation. Next of all, I'd like to follow up, uh, to provide any comments on the ordinance that they would like city council to consider. Any member of the public wishes to speak of the ordinance may speak one at a time and each person will have one more than three minutes to come. Finally, council will discuss and vote on. So at this time, staff presentation. I don't, there is, it's a staff presentation. This is a, this is a change to. Plan development. So the, the entire, uh, purpose of, of this, uh, change to the P U D.
And we didn't have any questions come to us after first reading? Does that work?
Uh. Are there any questions about that before we go to public comments? Okay. At this time, I'm asking anybody in the public who would like to comment, either in favor of, of, to this ordinance, uh, please come up and speak to city council, you have three minutes. Anybody on Zoom like comment on this ordinance? Seeing now we'll close the public, uh, in proportion, I would need a motion to do so.
Go on.
Oh, Christian, I'm so sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm, I'm sorry for the late hand raise. It's, uh, it's just a little hard to hear things. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that, um, uh, we mentioned that, uh, the planning and zoning commission did, uh, consider this, uh, ordinance at their meeting and at a public hearing, uh, last week. And, uh, Mayor, you were there. So please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the planning and zoning commission's recommendation to city council was to adopt this ordinance without any amendments.
Thank you. So I forgot. Since I'm, so it's part of the conversation. Uh, it was, uh, you know, planning, so he felt like. This and they adopted and, and, uh, and revenue of city council will do so. Uh, in which case, I can entertain a motion to close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Who moves to close the public comment portion of the public hearing?
You can say this.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you all for that. At this time, we're, uh, in deliberation. City council, are you asking any questions or can we comment on that? Also, is there any questions about, uh, I mean, I know this is just a, a, a change to the plan we developed. If you have any questions about part of yourself, by the time that you can ask.
Oh, what is we adopted? Something to keep in mind.
This is second. Any other? Here you now.
Trey, that's a lot. Based on the information. Uh, the ordinance number eight, it's written to twenty two, it's consistent with the emission development. Love the yard space on P U D. But I don't have the first thing. It's from P U D of. Neighbor. I bring up. Prove a. Plan.
Seconds. Thank you. Any other discussion? In the supporting discussion, uh, Laura, you're high and, uh, Chad, you're walking uh, the other day, just, you know, walking that, that whole piece of problem. So especially so Chad, you can see this is already a plan. So. Anybody? Well.
Yes.
Yes.
May I? Yes.
Yes.
Eight, series. Would they? This is a favor, not. Same as.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have resolution number thirty four, series twenty twenty two, a resolution approving a major government agreement between the city level and Lake County concerning the establishment of a multi-jurisdictional housing. Think we probably, should we, this is here for Christian. He thought Christian.
We are on the I G A now?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Okay. So the, the I G A, um, I, I, I think you all have a copy of, um, what, what my comments were. And we received a new red line from the county, um, today, um, with their, um. With, with their comments. And, um, I, I think the main things for the county and, um, I think maybe Chris Floyd is there and, um, Commissioner Mudge is on Zoom as well and can speak to this. Um, but, uh, they preferred to have the board members terms language, um, as it was previously originally, um, in the I G A. And you can see the original language in the red line that's in your packet. Um, and, uh, they also, the county, I believe, also wanted to do the, uh, have their, uh, contribution for, uh, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four in there. Um, and so as far as those things go, legally speaking, there's nothing wrong with, um, having the board terms as they originally were. Um, I, my suggestion was in attempt to simplify it and clarify it just a little bit, but there's nothing wrong with having it as the, um, county, uh, originally had it. And, um, then it's really up to city council as far as the contribution, um, whether you keep it as you directed last time, which would be through the end of twenty twenty three and consistent with the, um, projected budget, um, or to, um, change that and include two years instead of just one year.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's, those are the big things for the I G A.
Year. This point, subject of terms of. Station. What kind of issues today in terms of the changes, especially to the budget itself? And, uh, I'd speak to that as well. So Tim can as well. Uh, what the cap, basic idea is a thousand dollars. In twenty twenty three, twenty twenty. If for some clarity, maybe he didn't want. Like what process was.
Yeah, I can, I can draw here just in case some folks on. We want to hear. He has to do this, but, uh, we want the group and Commissioner Love, she said. Changes. Just consider. Um, the thought is what was. That is. As a two year. And the issue itself, we, which was originally. And you have to be somewhere twenty twenty three. Um, and so what? Let me make sure that there is planning for. The office, the. Construction, the actual building. So if I set up this survey and we want to commit additional funds to go back to twenty three, we'll set to have it go to June of twenty three, we'll match the rent symbol for the funding. So we've committed additional funds to go twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four to turn the over for a thousand dollars grant. To go towards the. Such that it can see this way. So it does have. We want to, uh, I think, uh, we.
If I'm not mistaken, the only change to the budget was in added line item, uh, showed uh, the county's obligation to operational funding.
Not operational. There's, there's only. So one and ten.
But if you explain the reason to, part of this change was to extend the date to December thirty first, twenty twenty four, because that reads the time. Exactly.
We said that, that in order to meet the requirement, we would need to go to this June of twenty three, but then consensus on those other day where my twelve year to date for twenty twenty four. So if this, the county is showing us to pay a committee for the first two years to help.
Okay.
We do that.
If you would do this.
So part of the thinking for this was that, um, as you all know, the dollar grant is very competitive. Um, so there's two options. We got the grant, we don't get the grant. If we get the grant, the managing funds from the city and county will be towards the head discussion of the infill sites of the county. So that gets us close to being able to go. Then we must need some other. Construction. There is the infill mix of one. So in the I G A. Start to. Doing packs. You list out all these different things that the house authority can do. Without any funding to do that, we can't start the first time on verification and or payment assistance or even deed restriction. So we are hopeful, you know, we get the grant and we can start developing these programs as well. But in the back two, if we do get the grant, we can at least be building these programs, um, immediately within the first year. So the county created. We're doing very. George. And the. Two year budget, um, the county contributor one hundred thousand dollars, twenty three thousand program funding, uh, and a hundred thousand. Four.
And if you're correct, that's your respective.
We're. And all of this is. Goes to show that, um, the creative effort between the city and county to file it. We are serious. They're also. Creating criteria for. The. Yes. So see that we have. Man. But there's the.
And I'm starting to think. Jake, if you, do you want us to share it on Zoom with?
True.
You didn't give any. And he. From.
And we, yes, we. Yeah. I mean, there's, there were four things that changed, the bigger funds, uh, um, and then, um, the staggering term. Added language on, um, which is. For the end, they have to create a. With one section protecting. The. And extending. So those are the changes. And the board approved that. Considered upon city council approval.
So if you scroll down to the bottom, to the. You can see, there you go. So I think that was what the mayor was referring to. Oh, two, two, two. The additional line there, I think, is that the county housing program.
Yes.
I think if I. Speak to it, I think it's some of the council we looked at the budget for is that it's quite about if we, the, the, the city is obligated to, uh, two A for, for both years. But the county was only obligated if, if the grant was funded and if not, then there was nearly twenty six thousand dollars in game. Uh, and I think at least for me, what county themselves, they answered that question in terms of.
When I took out thirteen. Section hundred pounds. To. Um, see. Hold on a second. It would be. So they're saying. Let's move my employees. I think. Just like you. Being. The. Employees could be employees of the city or county. So maybe it's more of a. Say I actually did correct it. So I did correct it. Christian. Um, my question is. There are three different. Um, I don't. Make two grand. And when I compare. Make two grand to eighty. And then the.
Yeah. Did the vote change the three? Did the vote change the three? It now there's several.
Three.
So if the, so the, the R T A lists this as exhibit A. And so what the board approved today is this updated budget. As of today, so this is what the fourth county approved today. County grant. And then county. Two year.
So that's a thing for this thing. Reason was Michael, you were giving out the matching on save to be written. Twenty, we had allocated. So that's one hundred, there are three hundred into the programs.
So are we sure it's three hundred, not two eighty? I guess we do have.
Yes.
But like.
Does the last screen is what was approved.
Okay, well, once we're done. If it's two eighty, we can compare twenty thousand dollars to go harder with the.
So we're still having some sound, uh, difficulties. So these are enough here in these conversations. To, uh.
Yeah, to see if she.
You've been through a lot.
Here, patch you in, uh, by phone. Is there any? Okay, I'm just going to be honest, you have one on the table. So maybe you are so many difficulties. Can you see me? What?
Can you? My mom's just turned on.
Uh, well, I have. Can you go ahead and turn off the sound on your computer? Yeah, that's great. We can come up here to it and that way it will be closer.
Good, good idea.
We can.
Let me stop it.
We're moving closer to the speaker so that you can hear everyone.
Can you play chat on to the number?
Do you have questions for us, Christiana? For Kristen's?
Here, that conversation. Whatever city council agrees as far as accepting the changes from counties. What's going today, that is, um, those are all okay with me and whatever the city needs to do as far as the city council do. The first year and second year, you know, through twenty two, four contributions and they should provide direction on that and incorporate it into their motion.
So we're happy to entertain further questions from city council asked to. If, uh, council member wants, especially if you have other questions on the.
In terms of what we need to incorporate, say some motions, especially if we don't have a a change draft in front of us, um, where is the valid initiative language here?
For the, um, the change that we added the.
Yes.
To.
Section four, three. Four point three.
No, we did this. Second phase, um, the same way.
Same most and use tax.
Yes, first, under article four sources revenue that's coming.
I understand, but you feel precise about that.
Right, well, and let's see, let me check it. I, were you counting on Commissioner Much as email?
No. See.
Uh, yeah, yeah, so you're looking there. Well, let's, what, let's, what if you. In fact, do you think that would be helpful to see that you can get that up on the. Um, screen? Yeah, but and Commissioner Much just summarize the, um, changes. The ones that we just discussed to the I G A.
Just a moment.
Well, that's why I thought. So the two.
Why can't you go? It's not, it is specific enough that we're, we're adding the same language. Regarding super majority. From, uh, from four point three to four point four. Regarding lift taxes, would that be a proper way to, to pose this? When I read through this.
And that's made a card.
I may try and make a motion. Uh, because of the whole conversation, some of these things are.
Yeah, okay, but.
Well, who else made your questions? Any of this in, in clarifications?
Well, I sent it. Well, there are changes, but they are so tiny that. Uh, we don't drop them in the board and see if that helps.
Just to point out, it just made another friction in my, my case to cut in case I did not change the language in four point four. So to reference add one taxes, so it still had sales taxes, that has changed that to the state rate super majority. So entire board is required to advance valid initiative for add the loan tax.
You say the entire board, it's not the total.
Of the, a super, a super majority vote, seventy five percent of the entire.
Good.
It's ready now. So the nine.
Would be easier? No. Good enough. Your eyes. Okay. Can you see it down where you are? Are you able to see more?
I can see. Jim, do you have a copy of the revised budget? That I can see.
Well, I think, um, you have. Which you need on the, I mean, you need, uh, Sarah's.
So this is the now from Sarah.
Well, he's got that.
Do you want us to get part of that? Here, so Simon give you the budget.
Thank you. Cause this will give you the changes.
Needs to keep attention announcements.
Actually, the.
That's a good point. Well, but because you all have changed your. Uh, entire year.
They, they did in the sense that it's two years.
Right, right. It's after I. I just put you in the word.
I'm sure that, that city council has come to change that, that, that have been proposed um, to the I G A on the county commissioners. That they're working with what they have. They didn't really change that. The body. A call to have the ancillary parts, but they're all. You got a touchscreen. Okay. Struggle, but I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go. Yes, please.
You're like number two, you have to say yeah, order and not sales.
Okay.
Say your apologies.
Well. Do you have? No, it's, it's okay. We understand. Need that. Mayor of the Bush. Series two, a recent resolution approving into government. City level account. Concerning established multi jurisdiction with the bulk changes. Change over. Change of one, be a change. Changes to the budget. In the I G A, um, the, the. Line says county grant. Check for three two. Additional one. Which is county housing program funds and show thousand dollars. In twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. And the changes to the budget. Number two, uh, that we add the same section four, three, to section four point four. Guarding, uh, the level of taxes. Which would be a super majority vote, so the entire court give as a valid initiative for a add the loan. Uh, sales for use taxes. Uh, including sale. Pointed members from the local governments have at least one. Correct, okay, good. Uh, the third will be that this, this, um, I G A budget. Will. Be. Current. Will be appropriate through the seven. Countful people. Jim, sorry. Okay. Oh, and, um, and what terms, uh, we did a term for, let's see.
Do you want to read it's on the R T A changes, uh, point number one, think you can just read the second half of the stagnant sentence that says, uh, that the terms will be kept, the staggering terms will be kept through the first year so that all three.
Oh, I see.
Are at large.
Um. So in section, uh, three point one, uh, we keep the original language. Yeah, and the city attorney's suggestion, it kept staggering through the first year so that all three housing. Different. Same.
And correct. Correction on that, uh, did we get your?
Yeah, it could. Yes.
Well, we so not giving. We could be, the stagger. End of week. Well, sorry. Is it ever. Your current slot. I think everything was important. We have a motion outside. It's really special. Didn't we be changing this stuff as often as? Uh, it didn't happen to be a jitter for that, so, no. But we have to point. City council. Since it's, that's going to be a conversation. So yes, after this, we need to basically ask the public to send an application as well for the. Thank you. Does it? We'll call.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Any paper? Do you, anyone?
I'm a bit better with this, uh, you know, in, in, in local government, sometimes we have to be a little wider on our feet. Uh, there's, 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 um, larger governmental, governmental needs to be, and I think this was in the map of that. What happens there, about the work of officials meeting and the city council, thank you all. Next. When evolution, and you guys, let's figure out as long as you want. Rest of thirty five, residents authorized the city of Ludlows to enter the municipal lease purchase agreement with the community first national bank with leasing purchase of one type one prior to rise of Ludlows Lake County.
Yeah, just a little. No, this is that we, um, the view, the very initial purchase agreement is. What we did is meant because of this. Did six investments and markets in the city and what we are down is the second part, which is just financing the purchase of that. And I go. Do we, uh, we have an entry here and, um, finance are there. But essentially what we wanted to explain is, uh, you know, this city county has shared. The county is offered to pay off their portion of the type one directly. So that takes out the, uh, total purchase price of their portion. And so we are financing our portion only. And so our portion is subject to interest. Uh, the entire purchase price of the engine is not, it's just our portion that we're financing. And I want to thank our finance director, um, China, who did an excellent job of grabbing this fantastic interest rate. Uh, within the time we're in right now and submitted up to you, see there for the annual commitment for the city includes, uh, interest.
Thank you, Bruce.
That's all right. So we have any, any questions?
No, this is, we, we actually, this is a flip of what we did with, with the type one twenty sixteen where the city paid for theirs and the county did, uh, the finance, their portion. We've done the opposite, really doesn't matter. Uh, this makes the budget more, more actually, uh.
And we have confirmed, uh, that with this, should we to pay it early in our town. So if we, if we choose that some. Decide that the time we leave. To do it, we could have.
Um, could, uh, could you share the interest rate with us?
I'm sure finance director, she is under three percent, three point, three point nine three, three point nine three.
And you're stating that interest rates have just gone completely out of control. So thank you for giving us that interest rate.
Well, now, very good, very good. Yeah, very good work. So all around. Great work for this, for the city, good work for the fire department and, uh, we. Yeah, so this is the last step for us on this.
And so we get this type one engine in twenty twenty five, is that what I heard?
Uh, it's going to be here two weeks and then a few weeks, it'll be here in two weeks. And a few weeks from here. No, I actually, did you want to come up and give us our, do we know an E T A?
Uh, initially it was ninety days, it's probably. And so ninety days, we're starting. Sweet. Sweet. So we're looking at it in three months. It's not there. Three questions about this, either the purchase or the buy. In which case. So if you don't. See our position. Just. Any universal action. Please. The list of. The landmark. Seconds. Hey, is there a discussion? More comments?
Want to remember that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes.
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 Offered in one to enter and we invest in this purchase agreement between papers. Please, and purchase on technical. With a six, anything, not against. And.
Thank you, thanks for having the public meetings later. Did this, uh? Yes.
Which, that's your question, which should add it. And it would be unusual meeting.
Word session, under session.
Yes, word session, this is the word.
I would just do it and.
Yes. It.
Didn't want to say music is. Is up to the people, just those people. Tent carry, the tent carry. On Friday. Uh, ten blocks to parade. What's that? Uh, next Tuesday, on the night five. Visit from five to four, Jeff Briswell. Here. We're here.
For you.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay. In that case, it's not great to say there is. Thank you. Other than that, so we are talking to city council meeting, there isn't a thing here that me, it shows one P O for P O C C, leave the meeting. First and third Tuesdays. So. Anybody else have any changes to the meeting? Anyone support that? Our, we have part. Oh, that's the part. Okay, uh, here. Say is, you know, all museums are reporting a lot of activity this summer. We've done a good job with passport, letting, you know, visitors know that there are museums. One of them has not been open, that's the, um, the Healy House. Uh, but he, so, and, and what I would really want to report is, in a six, six week period, we're getting reported for the House of the Eye, they had two hundred and ninety visitors in a six week period. That's really, I, I can't tell you these yet, because I didn't. It is. So that's all, I just.
And I get. Nine fifty dollars in donations for the people who visited.
Joe, that's six week period. Yeah, so it averages about three dollars and fifty nine cents per person. Who can don't.
What is the addition?
Zero. These are all voluntary donations.
See, that's why we decided to do that this year, but that's also what Temple Israel does, you know, and they take, and then it goes very nicely for the donations, right? I think that's a good paradigm for us, at least certainly in the first year, we were kind of experimenting with it. Any comments? Yeah, please.
In the American addition, efficiently, and I spoke to, um, her from my hotel in the third. And she's, she was confused because she went talking to Airbnb, Airbnb captain. They were asking stuff, if you got paid, they don't have any Airbnb, it's not you took it, but they're like, we really need you back. We emphasize.
Well, we agree with you and, and Donna reported today, I think, she received a hundred and seven of approximately fifty, which should be reported to her. And so.
They can have these literally couple of people. Because, and I. They would ask, hey, they have to pay for it.
That is.
We. To, we can save, and so the W A secret is help with a number of things, and she is looking at business license rules, we're going to be probably for a same for, and there's a lot of things that we now have to pay, we have to look on, and so. And tonight, we'll do this and she will exclude things, so we will. Do you think it's, you know, the fact that we, we have, we have this second, we learned to use, and that's the reason we have to make it as an easy solution, that's, it'd be easy solution. So yes, we, we need to perfect that, so we're, we're, we're aware of the route we're on. Right, I think I have a volunteer to make call. I don't, I agree.
Uh, and, and we've also found some success when we've been out for non compliance. So those sixteen, we are being able to gain compliance on all, either, either compliance or a reason why they weren't compliant, because they were doing. We've been successful at reaching out to people, but you're right, it takes a lot of.
And, and I have to say, okay, on that, return rental compliance, uh, we get a first round letter. Folks, we have four years compliance, and then a second one, folks who didn't respond to the first and the second, we just deliver notice to their. And we found some cases, you know, the company who we filed, we were saying that is a company record, but he just wasn't getting it to some of those owners. And then we found one, which was longer. And, uh, was on, you know, photo of a buyer's address, and we got completely nine, we had community rounds and said, look, for people who are looking, okay, can we make sure they don't get fucked? And we give media rounds, the address, so that they apply, and so there's, there's one that was keeping on of her, and it just takes a little bit of labor, and it, it, it works. So I do think in, you know, in the one case, when we got the letter on the property, she was initially very excited about it, she didn't want to be out of compliance, and once we worked through this, so I said, this is, this is stuff we're improving. In case she will. She has, she has. So we, we each did a little more.
Sure.
So when you're, when you're speaking. What, what do you say? So. Media rounds is a contractor who, what they do is they scan the short term rentals that are listed, but it perceived to be short. And then they will identify. If you give that information to us and indicate. Says let's stay official, tell them. You have to reserve new license, and that will help the property owner and say, I'll run to the gate, you're listing as, as, as a short term rental, and we don't have a license for you. And then we ask them to contact us. Thank you, thank you for the time.
Any other city council reports?
I, I noticed something about, please, with the things coming out, times you're being shaped to this end.
Yes. Yes, that is, that is the play I got today. Alan Club, who plays first week, all this, it's all a perfect. For detours for a bit, he was here last week, and he said, he said, what he planned for this was pop with both ways, not go to plan. Uh, and that's the new plan put in place, and he said, if it works. Possibly sneak that in the future as our detour. But, you know, first things first, we're, we're trying, that's, that's section three. During that detour. Okay, yeah, should we get the, out there, make sure that I'm. I'm going to just, art designs on both sides of the street all the way there, on Pop with Good Boy, uh, prohibition, just go say hi, say, prove what's gonna happen, because otherwise they won't see it coming. That's a very good point.
So they're, they're gonna go from power, turn on Ryan Street, and then turn.
No, they go straight up Pop, all the way to four. It'll, it'll be.
You're gonna take a one big sign now?
Yes, definitely, Seattle asked us to do. Well. Yes, they said that it will be two way during that detour. It could be exciting. And so we'll, we'll have, we'll have a very fast, and we'll have to leave just a room for people who are lost to get out. Speaking of stupid humans. We are. Today, we have, we have cones out there, and it's clearly wet paint, now it's in three different places where people step right in the paint. I saw them walking, saying, how's, I don't, I, I can't stand it. People are just stupid.
Did you follow the footprints?
I'm sure we can zoom down in the paint.
Exactly, exactly, we can, we're not looking at the bottom of my shoes.
Looks great. That's three departments.
Yeah. We, we, they have some blue paint too. They probably do, first things first. But yes, blue and red, blue for many cap and red for fire items as well, rewind. All right, you know, it's, it's seven forty, which is as close to six forty five as I could possibly get anymore, but it was really good. So, and actually, at seven, you could not sit in house. Come here.
Do you want to get that?
So, so to your. That we need to put that, the selection process on the next agenda.
Either.